Thanks for your wisdom and your guidance in the decisions that we make. Let us realize that those decisions have impact on the people who live in the city of Shreveport. For the God, we lift up the mayor of our city, lift up the members of this council, our families. We lift up all of the employees and the consultants and all those who work each day to make decisions and to make Shreveport a better place for all of us to live. We ask you for their safety, we ask you for their security, we ask you for their prosperity. It's in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk.
Ms. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins.
I'm on move.
Mr. Corbin.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Shine.
Present.
Mr. Sam Jinkins.
Present.
At this point, would someone please give a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
August 11th and August 12th.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Mike Corbin. Any questions? Observation at this time, Oliver, we tried to wait on him, but Sam told him to go out and get started.
I prayed for him, but.
Yeah.
Thank you, because I need it.
Yeah, Sam has got to go to, do a little prepping for the mayoral discussion tonight. All in favor of vote yes opposed is no, the approval of minutes.
Mr. Shine.
All right. Minutes have been approved with a 7-0 vote. At this point, can I get a motion to suspend the rules? I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins to suspend the rules. Jay, would you come on up and?
Ms. McCullough, can be your shine, please.
Thank you, President Shine, City Council members, Mayor Glover, and your staffs for your work, dedication, and vision in pioneering the entrepreneurial acceleration program that you've helped us to get started. It's been almost a year since we took two trips, one to the UAB, one to Austin, thanks to the city leadership, to see and learn how these cities are transforming their entrepreneurial ecosystems. And we learned from that exercise. And thanks to your hard work and support, we're beginning to put these pieces together here in Shreveport through the Biomedical Research Foundation's Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program. The mission of the EAP is to stimulate the creation of high-growth startup companies in Shreveport and North Louisiana. In your packet, you have some information, but I'm going to just talk about the city of Shreveport, the Caddo Parish Commission, how they partnered with the foundation through cooperative development agreements. We completed all those on June 26th, and then the city approved a grant for $250,000, the Caddo Parish Commission for $500,000, and Biomed matched with $250,000 to get us started with operating funds. We have a regular reporting responsibility as part of the CEA. That's one of the reasons why I'm here. We also have a written report that we provided you. And we sent this to President Shine on July 30th as part of the CEA to report on the progress that we've made as part of the EAP. So let me just briefly go through this real quick. So what have we done? We secured the necessary operating funds, $750,000. We appointed the EAP Executive Director, David Smith. His resume is in there. We've organized a new Louisiana Angel Fund. We've raised 1.5 million from 26 accredited investors in North Louisiana who are going to invest in these high-growth startup companies. And angel investors are responsible for 90% of all high-growth startups in the U.S. So now, we have everything in place to do this in Shreveport. We've already received inquiries from 17 potential high-growth companies. We've submitted an application to LED. They're going to, I think we have a great chance to get a million dollars on top of our 1.5, which will bring our fund to 2.5 million, which is more money to fund the startup companies. We have sponsored the Louisiana Startup Prize, not through any money from the parish or the city, but from BRF funds. That's been a great success with Gregory Kalenberg. We've held two education meetings for potential investors. We supported Louisiana Tech's application, a $3-million grant application, to develop a research and commercialization program. And in the packet are the metrics that you guys are going to rate us on, and we begun that process. So finally, I just wanted to say we're working hard with our many stakeholders to keep you informed about all the BRF activities, because we have a lot of things going on at the foundation. In your packet, we list all those activities, including the EAP program. So we're continuing to look forward to advance our economic development mission, to advance a knowledge-based regional economy. And for example, we hosted on August 14th, President Shine was able to make it, an informational meeting where people could learn more in depth about what we're doing. We have another one tomorrow. All you all are invited, as well as commissioners and other leaders within the city. We'll have that tomorrow at 9:00. Directions are in the packet. Then on Tuesday, all the community is invited to attend our annual meeting on Tuesday, September 30th, and we'll again go over our progress for all that are interested in knowing about what we're doing. So again, I want to thank you all for your support, your vision, your hard work and dedication to getting us to where we are today.
Jay, just before you go, I want my council members to, and the administration, to please try to attend one of those meetings. I was very, very impressed. And I've been down here a long, long time. I've been down here almost as long as the mayor over there. I think I might have came a year after he got down here. So you know, if I was really impressed, it must be great. This is probably the greatest secret in Shreveport or in North Louisiana. Jay, you all are really doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to suggest, Oliver, and you know, I usually suggest to Oliver, because Oliver looked him in the corner, and you know how that goes. But I'm asking you all to please make that meeting tomorrow so you can find out what's going on. And I'd like for you all to actually be a part of what's going on over there. Because actually, Jay, what you all are doing is the future Shreveport. If we can get behind you all and give you all a push and give you a helping hand, Sam from time to time, they will, it's an economic engine giant, and the only thing that we have to do is feed it. If we can help feed them, they can make a difference, not only in Shreveport, but I feel like in North Louisiana, all the way across the market. So, Jay, I appreciate you coming down. And any council members have anything to say?
Just briefly, I thank Chairman Shine. Did want to just thank you, Jay. I know that some time ago, you mentioned the trips that were taken. I know Councilwoman McCullough and I attended the Austin trip, and I apologize if I've omitted. I know there was another trip. I'm not sure if you all was on that one. But from that moment, I think we understood really the potential that this program has. And also, do want to call to the attention of the public, because I think it's important that we remind ourselves of our master plan. This very program is spelled out in the master plan for Shreveport Caddo. And, you know, in the past, we've had these plans that have been passed, and they sat on a shelf, and they didn't get done. And this master plan, thanks to the leadership of the administration and the Caddo Parish Commission, has really had an aggressive implementation. A lot of it is taking place, and this is another fine example of the master plan coming to fruition.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I guess I hate to do this, but you and I had a discussion, because we were worried about too many people coming to the last meeting, and I am planning on being there tomorrow. But is there any concern that we will be over our number?
If, and I know that I've been working with Art on that, if, right now, we have three. Okay? So if we go to four, I mean, we only have 35 places at this particular meeting, but you know, if we have to post it, then we'll go ahead and post it, and we'll try to accommodate as many people as we can. But yeah, you're down.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Jay, what I'll do, I'll give my spot to Oliver.
Okay.
See, I gave mine to you for last week.
Right.
That's right.
All right. Well, we're looking forward to seeing you all there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Jay, before you go, I want to express my thanks and appreciation for the work that you guys are doing as well, and joining the council, and commending you all, and also take the opportunity to piggyback on some of the comments specifically made by Councilman Everson, and that is that this is in some respects an advancement of our master plan. Biomed has been around about two decades, and is a big part of advancing the knowledge-based economy that we've been trying to build here to a substantial degree since the oil bust of the 1980s. And you guys are taking some steps toward that, and we're very thankful for that. So I want to obviously express appreciation for John Sibley Butler, a Louisianian, a graduate of LSU, and a cousin of the CEO over here, for helping to.
Does he fave him? I mean, does he look like Dave?
He's got a lot more hair.
If he does, he's handsome.
They're both tall and striking, but John Sibley Butler still possesses the Afro of the 1970s. So, but both are highly intelligent and very visionary individuals. The one aspect of the master plan that we do hope to be able to continue to advance, and will again be reaching out and hopefully get a chance to set up a dialogue with the council and members of the commission, is the aspect of it that talks about the economic development engine for Shreveport and Caddo Parish, the Shreveport-Caddo Economic Development Authority. That particular aspect of economic development that doesn't focus on these types of startup, knowledge-based, angel investor-focused types of efforts, but the kind of things that we're doing out at NBI, the kind of things that we're doing up at the North Shreveport Industrial Park, where we just last week met with WPS. They've got 25 jobs up there now, want to add another 50. And so we hope to be able to continue on the knowledge end, but also on the manufacturing, the chemical, the oil field, and all those other things, and a traditional part of this economy as well. Give us a green mix.
Sounds like a winner.
So we'll continue you guys on tomorrow.
You bet.
And Jay, and not only here in Caddo Parish, but what you all are doing is going to impact all North Louisiana. I just love what you all are doing. You're reaching out to tech, you're reaching out to ground, and you're reaching all the way down to Monroe. So you all just keep on doing what you're doing. Appreciate it. Some of these guys will be over tomorrow, and I kind of left my name and a chill there. Give them to Oliver.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you now. Mr. Thompson, let's bring up the resolution for the late Reverend Dr. Hines, please, who was, when I first got to Shreveport. Ms. Hines, would you please come up, please, to the mic?
Maybe you have the whole group with you.
Oh, yeah, right. You had the whole group. I'm sorry.
Dr. Jones here as well.
I'm sorry. Bring your whole group up.
We also have Marcus Hines.
Where's Marcus?
Shreveport Police Department.
Marcus, come on up here.
He's hiding back in his uniform back there.
Yeah. The chief ain't going to say anything. Mike could take care of that. Ms. Hines, when I first came to Shreveport, I was a, Jeff, you may not believe it, but I was a young, good-looking man at that time, working at Booker T. And we could always count on your husband to give us some protection. I was not a big man like Dr. Jones. I was kind of a little guy. And you know, we had some of those high school students that was bigger than I was. So, man, if I could have had some of those pounds over there, maybe I could have, you know, kind of protected myself. But your husband always gave us good security around Booker T. And not only that, a lot of kids who were walking the streets and should have been at school, he made sure that they were there. And we just don't have any of that nowadays. I mean, we had some of that, because you're a school teacher, you know, we had some of that nowadays, it would be a whole lot better. Mr. Thompson, you want to read the resolution first, and then we will get a motion for it? Or you want Sam to give us a motion for it? And Mike give us a second, Oliver give us a second?
It's Resolution 158 of 2014, a resolution authorizing the mayor to dedicate East 71st Street between Line Avenue and Southern Avenue in honor of the late Reverend Dr. William Bill Hines, and to otherwise provide with respect there too by Councilmen Oliver Jenkins and Michael Corbin. Whereas Reverend Dr. William Bill Hines was sworn in May the 21st, 1927, in Marif, Louisiana, to Anderson and Adam Michael Roy Hines. And whereas William Bill Hines, a veteran of the Korean conflict, served 26 years as an active reservist in the United States Army, where he retired as a Master Sergeant. And whereas William Bill Hines was sworn in as a police officer, as the department's first black officer in 1954, retiring after 21 years of service as a captain. And whereas William Bill Hines was instrumental in establishing the Magnolia Peace, State Peace Officers Association in 1956, a nonprofit community service organization dedicated to the betterment of law enforcement and the administration of justice in the state of Louisiana. And whereas in 1972, William Bill Hines was the first member of the Shreveport Police Department to receive the Distinguished Professional Certificate in Law Enforcement Science, awarded by the American Federation of Police. And whereas in 1973, in an effort to promote more African-American officers and to allow them to work in more areas in the police department and in the city, William Bill Hines filed a successful class action lawsuit against the city of Shreveport. Whereas in 2006, William Bill Hines was inducted into the RW Norton Art Galleries Hall of Fame. And whereas on December 30th, 2011, William Bill Hines was awarded the Trailblazer Award for Outstanding Accomplishments in Public Safety. And whereas William Bill Hines pastored St. Luke Number One Missionary Baptist Church of Shreveport for 20 years, the Antioch Missionary Baptist Church of Homer, Louisiana for eight years. And whereas in October 1999, William Bill Hines founded the Emmanuel Missionary Baptist Church, located at 482 East 71st Street, where he pastored until his death on May the 14th, 2014. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Shreveport in due regular and legal session convene, that the mayor on behalf of the city is authorized to dedicate East 71st Street between Line Avenue and Southern Avenue in honor of the Reverend Dr. William Bill Hines. So move?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, been seconded by Councilman Mike Corbin and Oliver Jenkins, who authored the resolution. And Ms. Hines, as soon as we vote on it, I'm going to ask you to say a word or two, and I want to thank Don Hobbie for coming down and being a part of this.
Mr. Chairman.
As soon as we vote on it, then I'm going to let Ms. Hines speak first, and then I'm going to come back. All right. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed is no. If speech of legislation passes with the 7-0 vote, Ms. Hines, we're going to turn it over to you.
To Chairman Shine, to Mayor Glover, and to all of the members of the Shreveport City Council, and more especially to Councilman Michael Corbin, Michael Oliver Jenkins, and Mayor Glover, thank you for initiating the resolution. I'm humbled, and I'm thankful for your action here today. Bill Hines was not a man of himself, but a man of humanity. Your actions here today, even though he resides in glory now, will continue to allow his life and legacy to live on in the Shreveport area, and in particular, the Cedar Grove area. Again, on behalf of my family, the Kingdom Emmanuel Missionary Baptist Church, all of the constituents of the Cedar Grove area, we are so thankful for your action here today.
Thank you so very much. And before you leave, I'm going to ask council members if they would like to say something.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to extend congratulations to Ms. Hines and to the Hines family, and to his friends and supporters for this recognition. I think it's very well deserved. I was just sitting here a few minutes ago reminiscing, you know, growing up as a little boy in Stony Hill, Pastor Jones. So many of us had dreams of one day being a police officer or a fireman. But for many of us, because of the color of our skin during those times, that's all it was. It was a dream. You pretended on many occasions, but you never really saw anyone that looked like you that were in those uniforms. Along comes, we always called him Sergeant Hines, and he changed all that. So he's definitely a Shreveport pioneer, a Shreveport legend, and we just want you to know, we know he's not physically here with us, but for many of young men of all colors, of all backgrounds, we certainly owe a debt of gratitude to him for opening the door, ensuring that all people, regardless of their background, can be positive contributors, especially when it comes to law enforcement, and especially when it comes to being able to wear that uniform with pride and dignity, and maintain the law and peace and order for everybody. So I just sit in, I was just thinking about that, and just really brought back some fun memories of seeing people like him and other pioneers who came along and showed young men like me that if you just did it right and took your time, that you could be whatever you wanted to be. And that's what a Bill Hines does for a city like Shreveport, and not only Shreveport, as this resolution points out, that Peace Officers Association shows young men throughout the state that you can grow up and be whatever it is you want to be. So congratulations to you, and just know we really appreciate his service to us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oliver.
Well, certainly, first, Ms. Hines, I must say that was one of the most eloquent reception speeches I've heard of anybody in front of this podium.
That's true.
So if you're interested in getting involved in anything, you've got a lot of people up here that would love to have you on their team. But I say that sincerely, and very, very well said, for those of us that may have been of a generation after these type of events. And so that was excellent to frame it up for me. And naturally, there's some credit goes to Don over here, who I will say spearheaded this, and appreciate your leadership in that regard. It's how we continue to, you know, recognize people's service over the years in this community. So I appreciate you doing that, and it was a great issue right here. I'm happy to support.
Mike, Ms. Hines, thank you for being here today and for allowing us to share the legacy of Mr. Hines with generations to come. As Mr. Thompson read through the resolution, it's obvious that the Trailblazer Award that he was presented with is truly exactly what he was, as the times that he started out, and things he went through and fought for for many people. And we're just happy that you can be here and that we can do this today.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
I'd like to. And our pastor.
Okay, Rose.
I'd like to say congratulations to you, First Lady Hines. For those of you that don't know, Marie and my sister-in-law, Betty McCullough, are best of friends. And so she's been a part of the McCullough family as long as I've been married, into the McCullough family for a period of over 33 years. But I want to congratulate you. I also had the opportunity and the honor of working with Reverend Sergeant Hines, that's what we called him, at Shreveport Job Corps, in the Security Department with the Corps members. And so it's well-deserving. It was so amazing when I first met your husband. I thought my daddy, Hershey D. Wilson, was the darkest African-American in the city of Shreveport, until I came across your husband. But he's really sweet, and he really has a love, as you said, for the people. And again, congratulations.
Ms. Hines, just before you go, I guess I met your husband about 50 years ago, and I always called him Captain Hines. And he and I used to talk, matter of fact, after I got on the city council, he used to tell me about, in the early days, they had to use a pay telephone to call in. And back during that time, Jeff's a good friend, George Dartos.
I don't believe I was alive in those days.
Yeah. But they couldn't eat meat. They couldn't eat meat in City Hall with the other white officers. And I know he told you, they didn't even have any cars, that beat. He had to walk his beat. He had to walk his beat. And if something came up, he had to find him a public, pay telephone somewhere where he had to call in. And he was just telling me, he said, Shine, he said, you don't know what I had to go through in order to serve the community. And I said, well, Captain Hines, I said, we're indebted to you. And he's one of the reasons today why we have black officers on the force, because of the way he conducted himself. And he proved that he could be, just because he was black, he could be a good officer. Not only a good officer, but a great officer. And I used to see him all the time, because I know where he lived, and, you know, we used to talk all the time, and I used to commend him and let him know that during those days, he didn't realize it, but he was breaking ice. You know, sometimes, Ms. Hines, when we're making history, we don't realize it until years later. So, you know, he and I got to be very good friends. He got to be one of my good supporters, because, you know, we would talk all the time, because for a while, I could just walk down the street, so he could walk up the streets, and we could talk. And we were very proud of him, and we're extremely proud of you. So carry on that good name of the Hines, all of y'all. Carry on that good name, and we appreciate it.
Can I just offer one more statement? I would like to say, I know Councilman Shine just made a joking reference, but certainly, I do think it highlights a point that, you know, for somebody in my generation, potentially a little too young to remember some of the tumultuous times that went on in Shreveport, and some of the necessary actions of trailblazers like your husband, this type of dedication and sharing his story is so important and so significant, to remind us how far things have come, and how much we still need to do, how vigilant we still need to be. But all the work that has been done, it just really, I just want to thank you for sharing the story, and for, you know, through this format, allowing future generations to know about the sacrifices that were made and the effort that was put into it. So thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, just before you go, you say, do we have any idea of when the sign will be ready?
We will be able to get an idea of that from Mr. Harris on tomorrow. I think we are waiting some materials to come in for sign making. We've had a little bit of trouble being able to source the metal we use for this, but we intend to be able to get this up, as well as Dr. Simpkins and the other ones from the previous meeting, and be able to effectively reach out and schedule a time that we can go out and have Mrs. Hines and the rest of the family, as well as the council members, to be able to be present as well for the installation.
Do you and Dale have a, Dale is looking so interesting over there. Dale, you have a word to say?
I think it's all been said.
Oh, thank you.
I would, Chairman Shine and members of the council would like to express some sentiments as well. I've heard Pastor Hines referred to as sergeant, and Chairman Shine, you referred to him as at his rank when he retired from the department as Captain Hines.
That's correct.
Others know him as Reverend and pastor.
That's correct.
I can say, as a young boy growing up on the Cooper Road, having the chance to join my neighbors, the Nash's, I was a Methodist, but I am a Methodist.
You know, I had forgotten that. You are a Methodist.
Absolutely. CME Methodist.
There you go.
But growing up across the street from a good Baptist family, the Nash- But growing up across the street from a good Baptist family, the Nash family, they're on Joe Lewis Boulevard on the Cooper Road, they were members of the Mount Perrin Baptist Church, where prior to Pastor Hines accepting his calling.
That's right.
I, as a young boy, knew him as Deacon Hines. And he was a great leader there in that church, and was a role model for myself and so many other young men, and served as a source, as you all have related, of inspiration for so many of us. And so I'm honored to be able to be here today, to be amongst this course of folks who are recognizing his accomplishments. We look forward to being able to put in this street dedication. I think that there are other things that we need to do as well, to be able to pass on the legacy of William Hines, not the least of which, I had a chance during the course of his homegoing, to come across a picture that was forwarded to me by Chief Shaw, that was shared by Mrs. Hines of my father and S.P. Pouncy with Pastor Hines, as they were starting the Jones Hollingsworth chapter of the American Legion, post 525 up on the Cooper Road.
On the Cooper Road.
Absolutely. And so there is so much history that is there. Now, I will tell you an element of that history, Mrs. Hines, that I did not have a full appreciation for until last week. I was having lunch with a local attorney, Henry Walker, we were talking about some issues of concern here in the community right now, and we talked about the lawsuit from the nineteen, I think seventy-five.
Right.
Where he represented, was one of the lawyers who represented Captain Hines, in the class action suit that's referenced in the, in the resolution. I, I knew that that was about promotions and some other issues and what have you. I did not realize, until Henry shared with me, just how limited opportunity was within the Shreveport Police Department at that time. And it's a clear indication that there's some of us who have the obligation and the responsibility to be those folks who will step up, step out, speak, shake things up, make folks uncomfortable, in order for others to be able to have opportunity. What Henry specifically told me was, was that at that time, for the highest ranking officer of the Shreveport Police Department was T.C. Tisdale. He was a major in the Shreveport Police Department. Now, the designation of major, to me, sounded quite impressive, until Henry told me that as a major in the Shreveport Police Department, the only thing that T.C. Tisdale had responsibility for were not all of the crossing guards for the city of Shreveport, but just the black crossing guards for the city of Shreveport. And so to have a name and a title that would convey to some folks that you have some degree of inclusion, access, and opportunity, when in actuality, you have a very small, limited amount of opportunity, was something that was not acceptable to Bill Hines. He stood up, spoke out, put himself, his name, his reputation at risk, broke through that glass ceiling, and others have benefited tremendously from it. I'm forty-nine, I didn't know that until last week. I think that's something that more should know, and it will even deepen our respect and appreciation. It's wonderful, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so very much, and I see two daughters that I know, and maybe I'm telling my age, Oliver, because you think I'm older than what I am, but...
Forty-five?
There you go, there you go. Would you all just like to say a word or two? I mean, yeah, just come to the mic and say a word or two.
I just want to say thank you. I'm his daughter, I'm Shirley, and I just want to thank the city of Shreveport and the council for this opportunity. And this is my daughter.
Yeah, well, that's just like his daughter, to granddaughter, you know. Come on up, granddaughter, come on up, and just say thank you or something.
I just want to say thank y'all for recognizing such a great man who meant the world to me.
There you go.
Thank you.
See, that's why we wanted you to come up. Now, Ms. Hines, before you go, if you all could wait a few minutes, Mr. Thompson is gonna get the resolution prepared, it's already prepared, where you can have a copy to take home. Now, we will keep the original copy, too, down here, and we'll file it, and it will always be in the history of Shreveport. And this is one thing that you don't have to worry about them right now, because, you know, you know, sometimes, you know, because you're an educator, and you know how it is sometimes, you know, sometimes, you know, things, you know, they leave out a few little things. But you don't have to worry about them leaving this out. It will be in the history for generations to come. And if you all will just wait, Mr. Thompson will be back, and because Mr. Thompson is older than I am, so he works a little slow, so. I hope he didn't hear that, because if he does, but if he, we thank you all for coming down, and if you all will just wait over there, Mr. Thompson will be back in a few minutes with the resolution. Thank you all again. Don, appreciate what you did, yeah?
Thank you.
All right.
God bless you all.
All right. And Don, I think you brought your pastor, huh?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's move back into the regular session, and Mr. Mayor, all of us have talked to, talked so long, you know, we don't want to hold Sam up, you know, Sam got a date with destiny, and, what is it, six-thirty?
Yes.
It's, it's gonna be at six-thirty, okay. I just wanted to remind Jeff that, because I didn't want Sam to get up and, and leave out if we go too long. Mr. Mayor, we're back with you at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Shine, I'm going to, to ask at this point in time, if you could, maintain the suspension of the rules, if that's allowable.
Well, I brought us back into the main, but I'll take that back, and go ahead on.
Well, if, if the council would allow, we have some folks here who are involved in the three items on the agenda involving bond work, who have some fights...
You want to bring those up, so they...
Yes, sir, if, if you, if you will allow us to be able to bring those up.
Now, are they driving or flying? If they're flying, I'll, I'll, Dale, I'll let you use my plane, and you can...
We've got a combination of drivers and flight.
Well...
And some of them, some of them aren't accustomed to rush hour Shreveport traffic, so I...
Okay, so we'll do that, we'll, we'll, we'll bring them up, and if they need to, I'll, I'll, I'll call my pilot up, and Dale will just take them on out to airport, and we get them down to Houston there, no time.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to bring up the items to be voted on?
Yes.
One fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five.
Is that all right? I'm sorry, is that all right with the council?
One fifty-three through fifty-five.
And ordinance eighty-four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I serve at the pleasure of the council, so I'm gonna ask my council colleagues if that's all right. Is that all right that we bring those up?
One fifty-three, one fifty-four, one fifty-five.
And ordinance eighty-four.
What is that? That's one?
Sixteen.
One fifty-three? Okay, can I get a motion on that?
No.
Okay, it's been moved by, huh?
Since these are bond ordinance, it may be...
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, right, we're, right, I'm sorry, you want, go ahead and read it off.
One fifty-three authorizes the city of Shreveport to hire professionals in conjunction with the issuance of not to exceed ninety-three million five hundred thousand dollars general obligation bonds, series twenty-fourteen, for the purposes set forth in the propositions approved in an election held on April the second, twenty-eleven, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Moved by Councilman Webb, seconded by Councilman Carvin. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, let's vote.
I thought the point is that they're gonna come up and talk to us, or maybe they're just sitting here for...
Well...
We, we're here to...
Did you all come up?
If you have questions...
No, no, I don't have any questions, okay, sorry, okay. Was there, was there a presentation then?
Do we, do we want to, for the record, do we want to give a quick overview? We were trying to be mindful of time.
Okay, no, no, that's okay, I just misunderstood, so let me make sure.
Mr. Shine, I think the reason for that is, they want them signed this afternoon, so they're trying to take off early so the net can...
That's fine.
...paperwork and get them...
Okay, got it.
That's, that's, that's fine.
We are now looking at resolution...
One fifty-three.
One fifty-three.
Right, we got a vote on one fifty-three, yeah, one fifty-three.
Okay, we got it.
Right, all in favor, yes, opposes, no. This piece of legislation passes with a six vote, one out of the chamber at this time. Thank you very much.
One fifty-four authorizes the city of Shreveport to hire professionals in conjunction with the issuance of not to exceed seventy-five million dollars water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series for the purpose of financing the cost of acquisition and construction of improvements.
Been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Jeff Everston. Any questions or discussion at this point? If not, all in favor, yes, opposes, no. This piece of legislation passes with a six vote, one out of the chamber.
One fifty-five authorizes the city of Shreveport to hire professionals in conjunction with the potential current or advanced refunding of any eligible general obligation bonds.
Been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, yes, opposes, no. This one passed with a seven oh vote.
And I believe ordinance number fifty-eighty-four?
Correct.
It provides for the incurring of debt and the issuance and sale of not exceeding ninety-three million five hundred thousand dollars of general obligation bonds, series twenty-fourteen of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions...
Been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, seconded by Councilman Jeff Everston for introduction. Any questions or discussion? If not, let's vote. This piece of legislation has been introduced with a seven oh vote. Okay.
I think that's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, council members.
Sam, they got to get back to Houston, that's why we did that, and I offered to let them go back in my plane.
I mean, because everybody with a Mercedes has a plane. Is that, is that a Camry? I just, I, I don't know how it works. Have you never been in that lofty room before? I just don't know how they, how they roll with that love.
Dale, what you gonna do with Oliver? Lord have mercy, I just don't know what I'm gonna do with Oliver Dean. I try to be so nice and so humble, yes. Okay, let's move back into our regular agenda.
Thank you, council members.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we're gonna start with you, and then we're gonna try to get out of business, so Sam can meet his day with destiny.
I, I will be brief, Mr. Chairman, with regard to mail communications.
Thank you.
I will focus just simply on one, and that is, I want to say thank you, thank you, and thank you again to James and Louise Burton for an outstanding three-day-plus-long event held here in the city of Shreveport that brought folks to this part of our neck of the woods from all over the world, and that is the twenty-fourteen edition of the James Burton Guitar Festival. The first two days of it, Mr. Chairman and council members, took place down in the Red River District with the opportunity to expose lots and lots and lots of our young people, lots of our local talent. On Friday and Saturday, celebrated the seventy-fifth anniversary of James Burton, who we all know is a Shreveport native, most famous for having performed nine years as the lead guitarist for Elvis Presley, worked with other musicians like Ricky Nelson and others from all across the country and world. On Saturday, we had a chance to be able to have one of the most special, most unique events I've ever had a chance to participate in, and several members of the council who were there as well. You had folks there, starting with Priscilla Presley.
Did Mike bring his guitar?
Well, Mike brought his guitar, I brought my banjo, and Jeff had his harmonica.
Okay, I thought Dale was gonna sing a little bit.
We were quickly run off the stage.
We, 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 we were temporary members of the hound dog band.
All right.
It did not last for long, and they got back to the folks who really could play music.
All right.
It was an outstanding night, the rafters, the municipal auditorium was full all the way to the rafters, and there were folks there who had their flags from their native countries, from Sweden, from Finland, and from other points all around the globe, a great chance to be able to showcase Shreveport, great opportunity to be able to have folks come in and enjoy the newly refurbished municipal auditorium. And again, thank you, thank you, and thank you again to James and Louise, the ultimate beneficiaries of all of that effort will be the young people of Shreveport, Bossier, and northwest Louisiana, because the proceeds from the event goes towards guitars for kids, one of their charitable efforts, where they help to put high-quality guitars into the hands of young people around this area who are interested in learning about music. They also use it as a tool to help them further their academic study, learn discipline, how to cooperate with others, and essentially end up having a chance to be able to lead a better and fuller life. So great effort, great event, and we're certainly thankful for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike and I was just discussing that, matter of fact, on the other day, that you made a great selection with this financial team that we finally have in place here, and we're looking for great things from, from that team.
Mr. Shine?
Mike brought it to my attention, yes?
I'm looking at an email from Miss Scott, and she said they need signed copies of resolutions one fifty-three, one fifty-four, and one fifty-five, which you've already done, and resolution one sixty, rather than...
One sixty-two.
Which we did not do.
One sixty, Mr. Chairman Shine, is the streets effort, that's one that does not commit us at this point, it keeps the process going forward, will still would be additional action, but we did not bring it forward at this time, because we wanted to be able to have some additional dialogue with the council regarding that.
Well, that's fine.
We certainly would welcome a positive vote, but our expectation today was that it would be postponed at this point, with a, with an opportunity to talk...
That's fine, that's fine with us. Would you all like to bring that forward?
I'm happy to report for postponement.
We, 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 we believe that there was gonna be a need for some additional dialogue.
Well, if we're gonna postpone it, then we should bring it forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's wait until we get it on our agenda.
Right, we believe on the agenda.
Yeah, let's wait until we get it on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Where they go.
Thanks, Art.
Uh, okay, Mr. Thompson, we're still working on the resolution from Ms. Hines.
Yeah, but I believe the office, Mr. Shine, we can get that done later, if you don't mind, they really need to get these bond things done today.
Okay.
We can get, we can get the other one done and get them to them.
Okay.
We'll try to get it done, but it may be later.
Uh, Ms. Hines, is it all right if we get it done and, and, and get it to y'all a little later? We appreciate you all coming down, thank you all here, all right. But we'll get it, get it to y'all a little later.
We, we will have Marcus or someone from SPD to deliver.
Please, that'll, that'll be fine, we'll, we'll have it delivered. And the mayor might put you a little certificate in there for a free meal, who knows? He's got plenty of money. Dale, you see how easy it is to do that?
You control the mic.
I can spin out of his pocket.
Well, Sammy knows I'm good for pots.
All right, Art? I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson?
Chairman, we're ready to go with the...
Jackie, you see how he reacts when I say, "Art, he didn't do any of that." Mr. Thompson? Okay, Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Shine, I don't believe that we have a public hearing today. I don't know of any items to be added to the agenda. We are under consent agenda legislation, under number eight, we have none, nothing.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, hold on a minute, you know what, Ms. Farnell, I don't want to overlook you and Brother Gene, and, 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 and Dale, I know you was looking at me kind of hard, I didn't want to overlook you either. Do y'all have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Ms. Farnell?
For property standards.
Yes.
Come forward.
Chairman Shine, while Ms. Farnell's coming up, didn't we want to get Stan to do a report as well?
Stan, please. Wish you're dead, wish you're dead.
Dorothy, eight oh seven...
Stan, when, when Dorothy, would you get ready to come up?
Dalisa Circle, D-A-L-I-S-A, that's in Southern Hills, it's a house that's been empty for quite some time. I got an email from a constituent saying the neighbors have been off and on cutting the front grass, but the backyard hasn't been cut in about a year and a half, and they got a swimming pool in the... And they got a swimming pool in the backyard, which they said mosquitoes are so bad they can't even get out in their backyard. So, I know at one time I had MPC involved when it came to mosquitoes and swimming pools. Do they handle stuff like that now, or is that... Where do we go with swimming pools?
With the swimming pools?
Yeah, that are breeding mosquitoes.
Oh, as far as the breeding of mosquitoes, we normally contact the parish for assistance in that area. They have something that they can come out and put in the, like, some pellets that we can put in there. If it's a matter of an unlocked gate that allows entrance to the area where the swimming pool is, then we will, property standards will have it drained and covered ourselves with the cost being assessed to the owner. But as far as the mosquitoes, we normally get mosquito control with the parish. We normally get them involved with us on that.
Will you take that and run with it?
Yes, sir, I will.
What we gotta do?
Yes, sir, I will.
If it's abandoned, we may need to use that new rule on pools and that they gotta drain it, cover it.
Yes, that's what we do.
And that'll help.
Yeah, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, they said they had called a couple of weeks ago, but they haven't seen anything happening. But, uh, so I got the email, so...
And it may be in the system, but of course, with process, and it, you know, but I will check and advise, okay?
Okay, and before you go, I have one other here, and I don't know where to go with it. I know we have an ordinance in place about leaving our trash cans outside twenty-four hours before, twenty-four hours after your normal pickup day.
Yeah, that's gonna be Mister Harris.
That's gonna be Mister Harris.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, let me get Mister Harris to come up here, if you don't mind, Mister Chairman. Right there on the front row. I got three thousand three Amelia. Neighbors have complained that he's had his trash containers out on the street for two years. Won't take them off the street. Across the street from that house, they've had trash sitting on the side of the road for over two years.
All right.
Check it out.
And Dorothy, would you give this to Barbara for me? It's an address we were in reference to, and I appreciate it. She'll know what you're gonna give to her. Thank you.
Dorothy, I believe we're through with you for the...
No, we're not finished, Mr. Chairman. I was really trying to intercept some emails that I reviewed prior to coming to today's meeting in regards to some... I wanted to get the exact addresses.
Just put your password back in there, let's see, maybe caps off.
Regarding March Street, Maple Street, some emails that I received that you and both Mister Stan Harris communicated with regarding... I think that was a Mister Miller.
Mister Gillis.
Mister Gillis.
Gillis, Joe Gillis.
Yeah. Could you bring me up to speed on what's going on with that, 'cause it seems like he's very uncomfortable right now. Seems like his problem hasn't been resolved, so could you talk to me about that, please?
What has happened is that Mister Gillis contacted property standards about the trash being on the right of way and that his neighbor had put it out. By email, I informed him that it was a public works issue, and I referred it to Mister Harris, and Mister Harris sent him an email, and he's here where he can tell you what we are now on that.
Okay.
That's why you all just keep on bumping into one another.
We work very close.
Okay.
I responded to the individual and let him know what the process was as of July the fourteenth about scheduling that, and so I asked him for the additional information and his phone number. He would not even give me his phone number, so he suggested that we were passing the buck between each other, so...
Okay, would you allow me for the record to give? I have what he stated here, what Ms. Farnell stated here. She said, "I explained to Mister Gillis that this was a public works issue, and I referred him to Mister Harris. Mister Harris sent him an email explaining the process." So, the process now is what, Mister Harris?
Well, he needs to... The normal process is to set up an appointment. He totally did not know, or have any knowledge of the appointment system whatsoever, and so I was explaining that to him. And explaining that to him, I think he became angry about the information that I had shared with him, and he would not communicate back to me where I could actually talk to him other than email. So, I'd be more than happy to follow up with the individual.
Would you please, because, you know, with the overgrowth and everything that's going on now, the rep, I mean, the elected officials are really catching a lot of heat. What about Cardale Moore? You actually took this message here, Miss Cardale Moore. Could you tell me what's going on with her?
Yes, we actually went out to visit Miss Cardale Moore. Her problem was on Maple Street, eighteen-hundred block to the two thousand hundred block of Maple Street, and there was one problem in there that was a property standards issue. We have that addressed. The other was the sofas and furniture, and everything else was on the street.
That belonged to her?
That belonged to Mister Harris.
Okay, but I mean, the sofa, all of that, that was from her?
That complaint was from her. Now, Mister Moore, his complaint was that in back of his house, there is an alley that has, that is overgrown.
Right.
That has not been cut or anything, and we explained to him that the alley was a public works issue. And so, Mister Harris was CC'd on that information, so...
Right, he kind of expressed too, Mister Harris, that in the past, the city has gone come out and cut that, so could he not be a little disappointed because we haven't gone out and cut it?
I just have to take a look at the location. We are responsible for cutting the alleys. I have not seen that location yet, so...
Okay, will you be contacting him real soon, Mister Harris, would you please?
Yes.
Okay, there was another one, but I'll just contact you on tomorrow, Ms. Farnell. I wrote it down, but I left that pad at the house. Thank you so much.
All right.
All right, Mister Harris, we're gonna turn it over to you.
All right. Very good.
Mr. Chairman? Yes? As Stan begins to make his comments, I want to make sure that everybody understands the, what Stan is about to do, because we saw some media reports that this was to be in response to some of the issues that we dealt with at the last council meeting. In fact, this is something that was requested at some point, I think, by Councilman Sam Jenkins, maybe a council meeting before last, and maybe several other council members in recognition of the fact that the new policies that we have implemented with regard to solid waste recently went into effect. They happened to start right before we ended up with some rather stormy, windy, rainy weather, which made it a complicated set of circumstances. And we ended up having some issues and challenges that we had to deal with at that time, but Stan's presentation today is not in any specific response to anything that we discussed or had dialogue with during the last council meeting, but it is an opportunity to be able to update the council and the citizens on how the rollout of the new provision of the solid waste ordinance right now are actually coming along, and what some of the successes have been, what some of the challenges are, and what we may see as some adjustments that may need to be made at this point. So, with that overview, Stan, please go ahead and start for us.
I've got the same sheets that you have. I have those down here for the public to see if we can get this to work, but if not, I'll go ahead and proceed. As Mayor Glover indicated, try to make it big enough print where they could probably see it if they're viewing it. But what I wanted to do was, there were basically six things that we changed as part of the ordinance itself, and what I wanted to do was just kind of walk you through those six things and share with you some of our observation and answer any questions that you might have associated with those items. The very first item was the establishment of the bulk collection program, and that basically consists of trees, limbs, furniture, and so on. We're all familiar with it, and the way the system is intended to work is that the individual would contact our office first, get the appointment, their appointment date. They would also let us know exactly what they're actually putting out there, because that gives us the opportunity to actually screen whether or not it's something that the city will pick up. And then, once we give them that date, then they would then put their items out appropriately at a period close to that date, so that we wouldn't just sit there. And one of the things that we're running into with people is that they're putting things out, and then they're asking, and then they're calling for the appointment, and the appointments are basically running three to four weeks out, and so, and we're basically operating at our maximum capacity. We do about sixty appointments a day, and so, and so, we try to encourage people to not put things out, but call and ask us for appointments first to get the actual date before they put things out, and that's not an unusual process to go through. A lot of communities use that. The, I think the key thing in our case is just, what we're planning on doing is doing some public service announcements to educate the public, not only on this, but some other items, as it relates to the solid waste program, so they understand how it's supposed to work.
I'd like to ask a question on that with Mister Harris on this subject here. The bulk of the complaints or concerns that I've been receiving has been with the tree limbs.
Yes.
As opposed to appliances or furniture or something like that. I'm kind of zeroing in on that. As some people call and say, "Well, we thought this was gonna make things move faster, but it's making things move slower." And I gave the retort to one caller that what you're saying now, that, you know, the idea was to get the apartment first and then set out whatever you want to set out, but like the gentleman was telling, was saying to me, what is he supposed to do? Just keep a yard full of limbs until a month later, as opposed to going out when he has an opportunity to gather all that and clean up his yard and put it out there? Not to say, you know, but the point I'm simply making is, and what I'm wondering is, I know we got tree limbs as a part of the bulk collection program. Does that need to be revisited? Because I don't know about the other councilmembers, but that's the biggest headache I'm getting right now.
You're right on the money.
That's the volume of calls I'm receiving.
Yeah, hadn't heard a complaint otherwise.
This thing is just standing on the ground much too long.
Well...
On the ground?
I think that...
Let me set it out, yeah.
Yeah, like grass growing up.
Let me set it out.
I think you were going from a program where people were just, they were putting stuff out on the ground with the expectation that the city would pick it up at their trash collection day.
Okay, but let's make it clear what we're saying is, we're really just talking tree limbs and garden-type waste. That's all. I mean, we're not in the furniture, appliance, tires, any of that issue. And the part that, if you want to say the behavior modification that we are requesting is centers around tree limbs and whatever. Now, I do agree with your next point, that people didn't know to put them in a container in the first place. Now, that is definitely one of the reasons why we had six weeks of backlog to start with, 'cause I'd bet if everybody'd have known in the beginning, you could've got fifty percent of that containerized before it started. But I am kind of along the line of Sam on this. Maybe you need to put bulk collection as one thing, and then yard waste slash tree limbs as a separate category dealt separately. I don't know how to do that.
It's, I think what you'll find that if people were to containerize, a lot of the small stuff that they're putting out, it could be easily picked up. They could either put it in their trash carts, they could either put it in a bag, they could put it in a separate cart, their own personal cart, they could even bundle it and let place on the ground. We would just want something that we can easily pick up versus having to come in with a pitchfork or people scooping things up by hand. That is a very slow process to ask our solid waste workers to continue to pick up that type of debris.
And Stan, emphasize that in that case, then it will be picked up as a part of the regular pickup, so please emphasize that.
But I mean, that part, talk about an education piece, and we need to hone in on that, because that part is, I'm telling that every day, is it small enough so you could put it in a trash can or two, or two trash cans, or two...
Or trash bags.
Trash bags, or three trash bags.
Or bundle it.
Anything.
Anything, and so that part, also with the person that picks up the phone that gets the appointment, if they would just say the same thing when the person, "I got an appointment in sixty days. Why sixty days? Well, is it small enough for you to put it in a trash bag or this?" That would really, I think, I mean, we could get some traction there, but I do feel like we're just fighting uphill, and it's killing us. I mean, that's my perception.
My head's not moving, Dave.
Well, and I think with, you know, anytime we make a citywide change like this, we know there's gonna be, there's gonna be a period, a learning period in this. We've been into it long enough, I believe we can look at hindsight, and did we do enough education with the public beforehand, and maybe we didn't. Maybe what we did, we thought was gonna work, and it wasn't enough. So, I hope that we will jump on whether it's public service announcements or whatever it is that we do, continue to put things in the electric, in the water bills for those residents that get water bills individually, but we've got to continue to put this in front of people of what the change is.
Right.
I think as both Councilmen Jenkins have said, the complaints that I've gotten and the photos that citizens have emailed to me, you know, have been largely, you know, tree limbs and cuttings and things like that. You and I have talked about a couple of these previously, where I had a gentleman who had two dead shrubs he had put out by his trash can, and the person passed them up. And I had, I've had a couple other instances early on where, you know, there were three or four limbs that you could easily reach down and pick up with one hand, and because they weren't in a container. The other extreme, I had somebody send me some information this morning where a resident had, I believe they said, six city containers on one lot, all filled with limbs that were six to seven feet high, you know, the tops were shut on them, so I guess that's containerized and we're gonna pick them up. I thought part of what we were trying to do is keep tree limbs and things out of packers and out of the landfill and send those so we could turn them into mulch. So, all that to say, I think we've really got to get started on the education part of this. How many knuckle boom trucks do we have in operation today?
We have three.
And for every knuckle boom truck that we add, what effect do you think that has on appointments?
Each knuckle boom truck can handle about twenty appointments a day, ten in the morning, ten in the afternoon.
I'd say that's...
How much do they cost?
I mean, I mean, that's a little surprising to me, you can only get twenty...
Me too, and it just sounds like there has to be some way to maybe catch up on this and use the fact that we've gotten this back up as a learning tool or an information. You know, people's attention is certainly caught now, you know? I mean, there's certainly frustration, you know? If anything good can come from it, perhaps while their attention is on it, we can use it as an opportunity to illustrate the better practices. For instance, you know, the calls, like everybody else is saying, I mean, the calls that I get are from people who are frustrated. They have maybe just a, you know, a loose tangle of stuff, you know? It could be a pound of waste, but it takes up a little space, so they don't put it in a container.
Let me respond to, because right now, we are, we're actually picking up the small items right now.
Yeah.
Okay, we've kind of, we've backed off of that. Any items that's not more than four by four by six, we will pick up, okay? And the whole purpose of all we're doing that is so we can take this time to educate the public on how it should be done.
But can a sticker go on top of the, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, is just as you drive by and you see something outside of a bin, something that isn't within the parameters of a normal pickup, can the guys that are on the regular pickup, not the knuckle boom, can they, can they just have a sticker to put on that bin that just tells somebody, "This is, you know, not the way it's supposed to be. Here's some tips on how to get it right." I mean, is there some way we can immediately, because I know the water bill is something we did, but a lot of people get their water bill, and they take out the bill, and they throw the rest away, and they don't know what's in there. But if I had a bright orange sticker on top of my trash can telling me I did something wrong, I'd be curious what I did wrong.
You could put stickers on things like that. You could put stickers on things like that.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman again.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually something Stan and I were talking about yesterday. The current ordinance actually authorizes that in terms of enforcement. It authorizes us to put a sticker on it and we're just talking about the need to order a lot more stickers in order to do that. I think the other point that Stan made as a result of the storm, as the mayor indicated, when we first rode out, particularly in areas of Highland and Broadmoor, we actually adjusted the policy to say, "We're gonna go ahead and pick up those small piles because we're getting those calls." But at the same time, we still want to do the behavior modification and let citizens know, if you containerize it at all, it'll be picked up. So a lot of those small piles are brushed, put them in a bag, put them in a box, put them in your, your green cart, they'll get picked up. The other item that's coming forward is Dorothy, her department is about to start the sweeps. And we've already linked up Dorothy with Public Works, we're gonna do two things. One, include the information again, that went out with the water bills and stuff as part of the sweep as they go through those areas. And also see if Stan can incorporate some of his guys into those sweeps to help catch us off, as we said. We're, we're trying to catch it off and at the same time, not encourage people to keep, keep doing it.
Dale, we need that, because let me tell you what they're saying over in my area. Uh, they're saying over in my area, they, they're landing on me and the administration.
Mm-hmm.
And I hear some of them saying, and I don't want to say exactly what they said, but, you know, when so-and-so-and-so was down there, we didn't have this, you know? Because I don't want to call so-and-so-and-so's name, because, uh, so-and-so-and-so might want to run again, you know? But it's too late for him to run this time.
Well, Jim, let me assure you, I tell everybody it's your fault and the administration's fault in my neighborhood. I mean, I just want to make sure that we're all saying the same thing up here. That's, I mean, we want a consistent message out there and I gotta check up, I'm sending that same one out there.
Mike, Mike, you see my friend?
I can't help you here.
Oh, Lord have mercy. Lord have mercy. Dale, you see what I'm, that's why we got to get it, Dale.
I see what you're, but that's one of the things that's, that's gonna happen as part of the sweeps.
I'm not gonna be running no more, but you know, the mayor might be running for something.
I will compliment the, um, the fact that, you know, I, I have a lot of oak trees on, on our block and we constantly have limbs falling, um, either my, my yard, my neighbor's yard. Somebody's always got a limb in there. And, and I have taken to just cutting them up, putting them in a bag or putting them in a bin, and they do always get picked up. Uh, you know, I mean, if, if you container, containerize the limbs, they do get picked up, you know? So I, but, but like Oliver or Mike, somebody had alluded that, that when they get calls, they're, they ask people about if they can containerize it. And I do think a lot of people maybe don't understand, um, how easily some of that stuff can be containerized.
And that's, that's the reason for the public service announcements.
The net.
I think people just, they're, they're used to doing things a certain way and they've been doing it for many, many years. And we're asking them to do something just a little different. And until we can get that message across, we're gonna always deal with that. I think that most of these, even, even the schedule itself, we, we pick up a lot of stuff that's not knuckle boom, uh, pickups. Because people, they'll make an appointment for something, the guy'll get there, he'll look down into the, the pile and says, you know, he takes it by his hand and throws it in the back of the truck, doesn't even use it.
I won't, excuse me, Mr. Harris, but I want Sam to do this, because the other guys, and I was down in Ron's district, and Sam, and I didn't know you know it. This is the number one problem people are having, you know? And, and, and Dale wants you to hear this too. He said, "Look, we'll vote for you now if you make sure you clean up the city." He said, "The city's so nasty." I mean, just, just, just everything, so, so Sam, when you go around, go to the council tonight, I'm telling you, that's what some of them gonna ask you.
I wrote it down.
Yeah, right. I mean, this is right.
Number one priority.
That's right, this is their number one priority. He said, "Look, and how we gonna be the next great city of the South and, and Joe, the city's so dirty." And Dale, I don't mean, I don't, I was gonna call the CEO and the mayor, you know? And, and, and the, and the guy that was running for, for, for mayor, he said, "Well, when I, if, if I'm elected, I'm gonna make sure that I clean the city up, because that's one thing that we can do." You know? And, and, and I understand, but, but Dale, you just got folks out there who just ain't gonna follow the policy. They just ain't gonna do it.
We got that in every district.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Right, right, you got that in every district. They just ain't gonna do it. And, you know, we just can't afford to let it sit there and sit there and sit there and, 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 you know, I would, I would rather, uh, um, because I'm on my way out, but I'd rather tackle something on to the water bill, you know?
You can have a riot right now.
Uh, yeah, you know, Oliver said we'd have a riot if we tackled more on the water bill.
Say that, we're picking up less trash and we're charging them for it. I gotta tell you, you'd be well served to be on your way out because the rest must be right behind you.
And you're right, Chair members of council, again, that's why we're making some of the adjustments we've made in terms of picking up those small piles, in terms of trying to work with Streetport Green to get more PSAs out there. As I said, with the sweeps that are coming, that, that, um, property standards and Public Works is about to crank up, they'll be involved in getting information out as well as trying to do some of the catch-up, uh, work to get some of those areas cleared that are, you know, that have sat there for a while. But ultimately, we're hoping to educate the citizens on, if they containerize it, it'll get picked up a whole lot quicker.
I know that, I know that it varies in, in different parts of the city of what ends up out there.
Oh, we need somebody who'll come by our area.
And we've said, we're trying to modify behavior a number of times up here. And I know how hard it is to modify a child's behavior, much, much less an adult's behavior.
That's exactly right.
And, you know, I just, I'll use my personal experience. I don't schedule when I'm gonna go trim trees necessarily by when I can get an appointment. It's, it's the Saturday that I've got three hours that somebody else hadn't already scheduled my time for.
There you go.
And, and, and that's gonna be hard for me personally to do. With our three operating knuckle booms, or if we added another one, would we not possibly have better results just having those knuckle booms out on the established Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday routes?
Okay.
Coordinating with supervisors that are out there. And if something's out on the street, we, we pick it up and-
You know, that's one of the, when, when y'all discussed the problem, that's one of the things that we said we'd look at once we got it in, perhaps going to a, a regular route type system. That's something that Stan and his guys are monitoring to see if in fact that's an option for us. But, you know, we're still getting there in terms of, I think you guys all pointed out the major issue we have right now, which is catching up. You know, we, we just historically, you know, you hear people who have set something out a month or so ago, never called. You know, now all of a sudden, they call, but it's been sitting there a while and that's the stuff that we're trying to catch up, up on. We, we have to believe that once we catch up, then the appointment system, you get people containerizing the small stuff, then that appointment system will work for the larger items, but we're still making adjustments as we go.
And you also have to- I just think we're frustrating some of those people that are, that are trying to do right now by calling and, and we can't get to them for three, four, five weeks.
Right.
Because we're dealing with what happened during the transition.
Well, let me-
And just one of the, and Mr. Mayor, you remember when Mike and I was telling him about a couple of your friends, one of us is, uh, uh, legislated tip district out there? And you said he was so frustrated? That, that, that's what they were about trash, you know, we can't legislate no tip district because you got some trash to pick up, but we can do that, you know? I mean, you know, it's kind of hoping the money would come to them and, and, and they would do that. And Mike and I was trying to explain to them, you know, "Hey, gentlemen, this isn't a, this isn't a good solution to picking up trash in your neighborhood, you know? We'll see if, I mean, we actually invited them down, because I know we can't invite nobody down to, to, to talk to you, but we invited them down to come to the council and, and, and you would be here and, and make it known, because one of them was here today, but they, they never came down and made it known. But, uh, Mr. Harris, those are things that, uh, and I almost had to say them too. You know, those are things that you all are gonna be faced with in, in the, in, in the next administration, because you have a lot of folks out there that's going, that's, that's uncomfortable with.
Right. But let, let me just add this, because, you know, you mentioned the idea that just taking the knuckle booms and rousing them around the dis, around the, uh, the city or the areas that we're picking up. Each day we pick up, we have to, a normal trash pickup passes about sixteen thousand households, okay? And, uh, you have, we, and we have like thirty, thirty to five to forty trucks that we use to, to try to deal with that. Now, uh, with the knuckle booms, not knowing where the stuff is and then rattling those, trying to drive that full distance, uh, that just, that's problematic in itself. And that was part of the problems that we were dealing with before, because we didn't know where the stuff was and we didn't know what was out there. Now we do. We know where it's at and we know, uh, what's out there, okay? We just have to be able to get people to understand. I think the, the key thing is that they containerize this stuff, it'll solve a lot of the problems that we're dealing with. It really will. Because it, it works in other communities and it will work here in Streetport.
I have two, well, one question. People that do yard service, and I know the issue is that a licensed arborist is required to remove, right? That's at least what we've been told up here before. It's a licensed arborist, as part of his contract, he's gotta remove the tree from the property, right? That is.
That is correct.
Unless you're doing that job in Streetport, from a practical standpoint.
Okay, yes, but-
And that's part of our problem.
Okay.
Because we have a consistent number of folks who are in the commercials, into this industry who prefer doing jobs frankly in Streetport, because they know that, that while we may not have the Lamborghini Ferrari of anything else, we've got the Lamborghini Ferrari and Rolls Royce when it comes to garbage collection service, in terms of the service we provide. And that we end up allowing those folks who have gotten paid by various folks to cut down trees, to trim hedges, to do whatever it is that they've done, rather than having to incur the expense as they would in Bossier or in Longview or in Baton Rouge or New Orleans or what have you of hauling it off. They know in Streetport, if I put it out on the curb, that between the homeowner, councilman, the mayor, the solid waste guys, eventually it'll get picked up. I won't have to spend the time and expense on that part of the job, and I can go on and make more money somewhere else.
Uh, wait, wait. That, that might be true in Oliver's district, but over in my district, Jeff's and part of yours, uh, that's, Mr. Harris, that's not true. They do it themselves. And it might be, and Sam, it might be true in yours, because you represent a lot of rich folks. But, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Sam, but over in our area, over in our area, Mr. Harris, that's not true now. I might, you know, it might be true out on the fine road or, or somewhere else, but-
It's true on the Cooper Road in Hollywood and in Moretown as well.
No, 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 Mr. Mayor, we don't want to get in no-
Now, you have a hard number of folks there who will do their own work, but a considerable number of folks there.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to get in arguments.
Insurance, trees fall down, need to be cut up.
Yeah, we don't want to get in arguments about it, but what I showed you the other day, that was not done by professionals.
Mm-hmm.
And Ron, I was down in your area too, and it wasn't done by professionals.
Well, they, they hire fly by nights to take it down, people that aren't even licensed.
Okay.
Yeah, over that, right.
They don't hire contractors.
Here's, you're, we're now on the line of reasoning that I started with in this discussion.
There you go.
Okay, so, my first comment is, since that is indeed the law, and there, and there's one example where a guy, and I think you've gotten the email, pointing to Mike's district and he sent you a picture of the whole thing. And that, that was a full commercial job. I mean, nobody did it but a commercial deal. I mean, it's just big around and then they stacked. And that clearly, where we are not doing ourselves any justice by going to pick that deal up. We need to-
Find out who he is.
Yeah, yeah.
Whoever did that, you need to call that guy, because he's gotta be a licensed arborist. I mean, if he's cutting that tree down without a license, I mean, that guy's got a lot of other insurance issues. Go near, so, I think we should, on our side, at least on the ones that are clearly commercial jobs, you make the effort of contacting the individual and saying, whoever did this needs to come pick it up, because this isn't our job.
Right.
That's right.
As a matter of fact, in our ordinance-
Okay, well, ultimately, who, who ultimately will be responsible for that? Will it be the homeowner?
The homeowner.
The homeowner.
Because it becomes a property standards violation the moment nobody picks it up.
Because see, in our, in our ordinance, in order to, uh, to alleviate the issue with the contractor, what we do is we limit the diameter of the tree that we even pick up, it's eight inches. Anything beyond eight inches in diameter, we will not pick up. Because anything beyond eight inches, the average, uh, uh, resident does not cut that up. It's just being done by a contractor.
Okay, so then the next, so I mean, I, if you find any of those in my district, I will knock on the guy's door. I am happy to do that, because that to me is just fraud and frankly, a person is taking advantage of the homeowner, in my opinion, much like the mayor says. Because he's taking advantage and the homeowner doesn't really understand what they've gotten themselves into. And that guy said, "Hey, I'll intercatch you," but, and I'd be happy to support that in my district. I don't know, I won't speak for the rest of the councilmen.
I will be happy to do it in my district. If you find any that are done professionally, I will, I'll be happy to do it. But those that are done by homeowners, we need to find some kind of way to get it.
And that's why we have, we're, we're getting ready to hire the compliance officers, public work compliance officers. They have the ability to do that.
Okay, now my, but my next question is, people that run yard services, okay? As part of, there is obviously their small business and they must have a, I'm not saying they all have a license, I'm not, it's illusion. But they, there are some that have a business license.
Mm-hmm.
Do they not, as part of that business, require to remove whatever yard waste they generate or put it in compliance with the city? I mean, I'm, I'm asking somebody to know, if you run a yard service and they're, you know, published in the Yellow Pages or whoever, I, I don't mean, you know, that, that are reputable, do they have to remove it or not?
Dale, I don't know, I have to, I'll check on that one.
Well, because, and I, I was trying to catch Terry's eye to, to get her to look at it, but I, I didn't think the ordinance was limited to just professional arborists. I thought it was, uh, but I, I thought it was any, uh, even yard guys could do it.
Well, because the arborist is part of a licensing issue that I believe is even at the state level for insurance purposes, not a city ordinance, but-
But we have a separate city ordinance and I'll ask Ms. Scott to look at it. I think that talks about anybody, not just professional arborists, but even the yard waste guys.
Okay, well then, to say that's an education thing, we have done absolutely nothing about as part of this campaign. We have not broadcasted that out to all the people that have, people that come do your yard service. You need to put on that same deal. If you have somebody that comes and does, it is part of that contract as a license. If that is indeed the case-
We'll, we'll confirm that.
We definitely, because that's not out there and I, I try to dance around with it when I talk to people about it. Because I say, "Well, I'm an older woman," I say, "Well, who's cutting it?"
Right.
"Oh, I have a yard service that comes." Well, just a minute, I think they're supposed to remove it. But we need to educate people on that, because we are not doing that. I recognize that's not all over the city, but there are a lot of our city that has. It helps out, you know, for people to do it themselves.
Yes, sir. Could I suggest one thing and because council members might not want it? We have almost spent two hours. And I was wondering if it's all right with the council members, because there's a little something tonight. And I was wondering if, if we could get Mr. Harris to come back next council meeting and finish up. Mr. Harris, could we do that?
Not a problem.
Councilman Shine, I haven't had, I've missed this button ten minutes ago.
Well, I, I didn't hear you take a shot at him and Mr. Harris, when she gets through-
Actually, I have Jeff, your, your advice to tell you.
When, when she gets through, uh, please come back to the next city council meeting, please.
Okay.
Okay, wait, but she wants to, she wants to say something to you.
Uh, Stan, would you take a note? Uh, I'm just kind of concerned about the main, what we would consider main thoroughfares in District A, Martin Luther King, Ford Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it seems like we have showcases of furniture out on the sidewalk. And I don't, apparently they haven't called in. I'm just wondering, I know Ms. Farnell did the community coming up to the Fourth of July last year, the favor of clearing up an entire household, uh, with the knuckle booms. There are about three or four similar situations in District A right now on MLK, as well as Ford Street and Audrey Lane.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, where they have actually pulled out the entire house furniture and every, I mean, coming from every room in the house, which is an eyesore to the neighbors, you know, residing on that street. So if you just make a note, I mean, I know that you have a system, but the citizens don't understand the system.
Mm-hmm.
And they somehow feel like there is something that we can do aside from when they reported to, when it, when I report to them, that I have reported it to you. So could you please just have your crew, uh, to go by Martin Luther King, Audrey Lane, MLK, I mean, um, Ford Street, because it's a main thoroughfare. I mean, it's where people travel on a consistent basis to remove the showrooms of furniture. One more for the record, um, July nineteenth, I received a complaint from a Ms. Calley, Mem's Theus, that resides on Fifth Avenue regarding the fallen tree, which I contacted you about.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you also, uh, you met with me on Kenneth in Allendale. And we actually, together, we observed a falling tree which had, it seems as if though, punctured through an electrical line. I don't know, you recall that on Kenneth Street the other day? other day?
Yeah, it was actually, they'd actually cut the limbs on both sides, and the...
And the line, it was, the line was actually caught up in the tree.
Yeah, the tree actually grew around it, yeah.
Right. Well, that kind of reminded me of the situation on Fifth Avenue, where the citizens feel like if it's in harm's way, you know, if somebody happens to pass by and the tree falls, because you know, we had a young lady that actually got killed, but that was through an act of nature. I actually attended those services, but the citizens are concerned and somehow feel that I, or the council, the council persons can actually, um, drive this administration, or the Public Works Department, because these trees are in harm's way, they feel like it, they might just so happen to fall on somebody, that, that maybe I'm not doing enough, or the council is not doing enough, or your department is not doing enough to prevent, um, the trees from falling, or they feel like we should be obligated to a certain degree because of the safety hazard, to actually come out and cut those trees. So, for the record, I would like you to tell me, and the administration as well, you know, once I report safety hazards like this, because I'm expected to go beyond, and there's more that can be done, I mean, it reminds me of the landfill situation, you know, there's more that we can do. For the record, if it's more than I can do as the representative to expedite getting these trees cut, similar to the trees that we observed in Allendale, and the trees that we addressed on Fifth Avenue, I need you to tell me, or this administration, Dale, to tell me what I can do, what more I can do, because that's what I'm telling, that's what I'm being told.
That's what you've done. It's been bringing it to our attention, because yesterday and today, I had a chance to actually see a picture of it, and, you know, the situation is, it is on private property. We understand there's an issue of absentee ownership. The picture I saw, the limb, either it's broken or about to break, but it looks like it's extending out across the street. I'm going to ask Stan to get his guys to go back and look at it, because if in fact, it looks like it may fall, we don't necessarily want to wait till it fall, but we'll try and sort through those other issues in terms of who the owner is, and whether or not we can get access to that property. But we certainly appreciate it, and seeing those pictures really help illustrate the concern that the citizens have. So, we're going to look at it, but they really need to understand, if it's not on public property, it's very, very difficult for us to go in there and address that. But with absentee ownership, there may be some other issues. Looks like it's right next to a bridge. There may be some other factors in there that we'll look at, but you've done all you can do in reach our attention.
Yeah, and I'll go by and take a look at it, because if it's, if the tree is extending over into the right of way vertically, then I can slice that, I can cut that.
Okay. That was what I asked, um, back in the last of July, and so...
Would you, and we're going to schedule you for the next council meeting. Ms. Scott, would you come up one minute, please, ma'am?
Thanks, Stan.
Stan, thank you, here. We are getting into the campaigning season, reelection, and I wish you would state to, because we've got Councilman Jenkins, and Councilman Jeff Ellison, and Councilman Rose McCullough that would be running for reelection, and would you state to them what the law is about wearing or bringing campaign signs during the city council meetings, now if they're out campaigning, that's all right, but to sit here on the dice with church-owned signs that says, "Vote for me," would you give them the policies on that?
Let her give the opinion, but don't, I think you're giving her, giving her an assumption that may not exist in statute, Mr. Shine, so...
I'm asking her, I'm asking her to, to give us that statute, and if it's not in statute, we don't have no problem with it, because...
As I heard, I heard you asking her to affirm what you just stated, and I want to make sure that that's not what she feels I'm doing.
Well, if I'm asking you to affirm what I, what I just said to you, I think the mayor misunderstood what I said. Now, I know he has good ears, and he's good at talking, but that's not what I ask you. I ask you to state the policy on that.
And before you do that, I just simply want to say, for the record, because this is on television, Sam Jenkins has brought no campaign personnel into the council chamber.
That's right, now, Sam, right, Sam, right, Sam is not, Sam is not, we don't, we don't generally do that. Now, if it's all right for them to do that, then we have other people who are running for office that want to come down, and they want to do the same thing. If it's, if it's not a policy, if it's not a law about it, state it, and there won't be no problem. We'll move on. If it's one, state it. Now, I'm not asking you to affirm what I said.
Yes, sir, I understand your question. Would you do me the opportunity to do this? Because I have not had a chance to research this particular issue since qualifying ended on last Friday.
Right.
If you will give me the opportunity to research that, and provide a written response to the council in the form of an opinion by the end of this week.
We will do that, because I know you can't put campaign signs in roadways and other things like that, because I've told other people who are campaigning for, don't put your sign in the roadway. Or they want to bring, they want to bring signs down here to City Hall. I know two or three, uh, people who are running for office, they want to bring signs down. You can't do that. You can't, you can't bring signs down here. And a lot of times, they want to bring them in the chamber here. You know, you can't do that. Now, if that's not illegal, tell me, and if they want to bring some signs down here, we let them bring them in here and show them, or, or, or whatever. You know, we just want to be fair across the board.
And Mr. Shine, will the opinion will respond to your request and look at the law across the board?
Please do. Please do. Thank you very much.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, uh, let's move on, so we can take care of business. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Shine, are we ready to do ordinances and resolutions now, you think?
Please, because we don't have anybody who wants to speak at this point for public comments, and...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Councilmember? I don't know if you have it in front of you. We did want to make the council aware that we, we do have, for your consideration, and we've had it distributed yet, three nominees for the Shreveport Home Mortgage Authority.
Uh, did you want us to take them up now, or, uh, this is for the next council meeting?
If you are open to taking them up now, we would certainly request that you do so, but we will respect the council's wishes.
All right, let's take them up at the next council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I think there was some discussion that we may take them up at the next council.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Let's take them up at the next council meeting, and give it by an opportunity to get a look at it. Mr. Thompson, please, proceed.
144 authorizes the employment of special legal counsel to represent the city of Shreveport.
Been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven oh...
Mr. Chairman?
Your iPad's working fast, you're mine.
Okay. Wait, wait a second.
Uh, we're going to have to take a hand.
Okay, seven oh vote, uh, B.
Quick, quick thing.
Okay.
Tried to raise my hand in between. I think we're missing a resume of one of the three candidates. It appears we have Lydia's and Mr. Bradford's, but the third candidate on the list, I don't believe we...
Scott Wolf?
I don't believe there's one, at least in the packet. Just as a note for, I mean, we're not going to wait another two weeks, but...
We'll make sure that that's included.
Okay.
All right, uh, 145.
145 authorizes the use of certain city-owned equipment by the Junior League of Shreveport.
Some move by Councilman Ellison, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. This legislation passes with the seven oh vote.
146 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport.
Moved by Councilwoman Rose McCullough, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with the seven oh vote.
147 authorizes the use of certain equipment by sports...
Moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, I mean, uh, Oliver Jenkins, Oliver, the young, the young Jenkins, Sam, you hear that? Second by Mike Carvin. Sam, what are we going to do with Oliver?
I have no idea.
That's the young Jenkins, ain't this it? All right, passes with the seven oh vote.
148 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the Department of Air Force.
Moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Councilman Jeff Ellison. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
149 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Jet Up.
Moved by, uh, Jeff Ellison, second by Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Uh, uh... Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Would you find out whether we've given that organization any money, please? I know we're giving them some, they're using some. Jeff, have we?
I don't believe so. I think we've, I think we've done something similar to this in the past, where we've allowed them to use city equipment for the purposes of an event that takes place at a city facility, but to my knowledge, we haven't, but...
Okay, because, uh, uh, Mr. Thompson, when we, organizations from now on that we give money to, we want them, we want to get a report from them, make sure we find out what they're doing with our tax dollars. I've had people ask me, and if we do a follow-up. Mr. Sibley?
Yes, sir.
I've had people ask me if we do a follow-up to find out what we give, like NIP dollars or other tax dollars to private organizations, and, uh, they're entitled to know what we're doing with, uh, federal dollars.
A seven oh vote, Mr. Chairman.
Seven, thank you, thank you. All right, let's move on.
150 authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Rotary Coalition.
Moved by Councilman Ellison, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. This legislation passes with the seven oh vote.
151 authorizes the use of certain equipment...
Moved by Councilman Jeff Ellison, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. Uh, let's vote, seven oh vote.
Mr. Webb?
One that's, yeah. 152 authorizes...
Moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no.
It's in my district, I support it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. McCullough, please.
And you look good out there running.
It's one of my colors.
All right. Sure, sure is.
Then we're down to one.
I think Oliver did it on purpose. We are down to 157, I believe.
153, 154, and 155 have been adopted.
Right.
157 suspends...
Moved by Councilman Ellison, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. Uh, seven oh vote.
Mr. McCullough?
Who made the motion in the second?
Per, motion second.
Edison and, um...
Carvin.
Mr. Corbin?
Yeah.
Just seven oh vote.
Yes, seven oh vote.
158 authorizes the mayor to dedicate East Central Street between Lyon Avenue and Southern Avenue. That's been adopted.
Yeah, right.
159 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 106 and Chapter 17.
Moved by Councilman Mike Ellison, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. You got those? Ellison and Carvin.
You said Mike Corbin?
I made the motion.
Yeah.
Councilman Corbin's second.
Okay, that's Ellison and Carvin.
Mr. McCullough, I'm really, I mean, because I'm not hearing these motions and seconds that are being called out by the chairperson, I'm really getting a little behind here, so could you let me know where we are at this point?
This is the one for the event that's taking place at Herbie Kay's, um...
160.
Once...
We're on 160 now.
159, are we on resolution?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have postponed 160 already.
Right, I'm just not hearing, uh, Councilman Shine, I am not hearing these motions.
I'm going to talk a little louder.
I need to hear my colleagues make the motion.
Well, I'm...
I'm not hearing them make the motions and the seconds. I hear you giving the motions and the seconds from my colleagues. I need to hear them make the motions. I need to hear the seconds.
As chairman, I'm going to let you hear it. You're going to hear it from the chair.
Thank you, thank you.
You're going to hear it from the chair. All right, come on, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Shine, I believe, I believe on one.
I'm sorry, Ms. McCullough, would you please vote on 159? Thank you.
On 160, I believe there was a discussion about, uh...
Postponing that, yeah. It's been moved by Councilman Carvin to postpone, been second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. I'm sorry, yeah, Oliver Jenkins. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. This passes with a seven oh vote.
Mr. Shine, we're down to introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to September the ninth. Uh, we only, well, we have two. 162, I believe, a motion to remove it from the agenda would be in order.
Some move by Councilman Ellison?
I didn't hear him.
Uh, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Oliver Jenkins is raising his hand. If you didn't hear him, you heard him now.
Jeff, did you make your motion?
Uh, uh, B, did you get that?
Jeff said he didn't hear it either.
Okay.
You said Jeff made the motion.
If Jeff didn't hear it, uh...
He said he didn't, he didn't hear it.
Councilman Mike Carvin made the motion.
That's ridiculous.
Let's move, please, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I need to vote for Mr. Webb and Ms. McCullough.
That, that motion was to remove 162 from the agenda.
From the agenda.
Try it again, Ms. McCullough.
You got to keep up, Ms. McCullough. You want speed down.
It's still being registered. I'm going to ask my, my fellow colleagues to please allow me to be excused, because this meeting is not being conducted in an orderly fashion, so I refuse to remain.
Please, please, you, you may, you may...
Allow me to.
Uh, nobody can keep you from going. I can't keep you from moving. This is, what kind of meeting is this, Mr. Mayor? What kind of meeting is this?
It's a people's meeting, Mr. [inaudible].
All right, all right, it's a people's meeting. A while ago, it's the city council meeting. That's all right, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Thompson, would you please?
Mr. Shine, 161 needs to be introduced and ratified the execution of a cooperative...
It's been moved by Councilman, uh, Mike Carvin, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. And all, only thing you have to do is raise your hand. You don't have to...
You don't have to do that, Oliver.
Because you, you talk soft.
You don't have to raise your hand, not open your mouth, not in this chamber.
Mr. Thompson, would you please read the next one?
Mr. Chairman, we're now to introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to September the ninth. Number 82 amends a 2014 general, grants special revenue fund budget. Number 83 creates and establishes parking restrictions anytime on both sides of the 2600 block of Newport Street. Number 84 has already been introduced. Number 85 authorizes the Shreveport Airport Authority to dispose of two aircraft, rescue, and firefighting vehicles as surplus property. 86 amends certain sections of Chapter 66 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the employees' retirement system. 87 amends and reenacts Section 22-26, comprehensive building, relative to the comprehensive building code. Uh, number 88 is a zoning matter, C-52-14. It rezones property located on the northwest corner of Lenwood Avenue and Fulton Street from B2 to B3 with MPC approval. Number 89 rezones property located on the northwest corner of Cattle and Common Street, surrounded by Douglas and View Streets, from R3 to B4. Number 90 rezones property located on the northwest corner of Quinton Street and Hearn Avenue, from B1 Buffer Business District to B1 E Buffer Business Extended Use District, limited to a snow cone machine only. Number 91 rezones property located on the northeast corner of Edge, Edgemont Street and Lyon Avenue, from R3 Urban Multi-Family Residence District to B1 Buffer Business District. Number 92 rezones property located on the east side of Kingston Road, at the intersection of Bellevue Road, from B3, from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to B3 Community Business District on the western portion, that's on Track 1, Kingston Road frontage, and from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to I, 1I Light Industry District on the eastern portion.
Been moved by Councilman Ron Webb, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. Uh, legislation has been introduced...
Mr. Oliver Jenkins? Sorry, I thought I clicked it.
With a six oh vote, one out of the chamber, it will live for two weeks. At that time, it may or may not be voted upon.
Chairman, we're now to ordinances on second reading and final passage. Number 78 amends and reenacts portions of Article 11, Chapter 42 of the Code, relative to street performance.
Some move by Councilman Mike Carvin, second by Councilman Jeff Ellison. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. Uh, this piece of legislation has been passed with the seven oh vote, I mean, six oh vote, one out of the chamber.
Mr. Shine, thank you.
I got it. There you go.
Number 79 amends a 2014 general fund budget. Uh, this concerns the engineering office.
It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. All right, this piece of legislation passes with the six oh vote, one out of the chamber.
Number 80 amends a 2014 capital improvement budget.
Been moved by Councilman Ellison, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Alright, all in favor of vote, yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with a six oh vote, one out of the chamber.
Number eighty-one amends the twenty fourteen budget for the general fund. This is for city courts.
Been moved by Councilman, uh, Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin. Uh, let's vote on this one. Uh, it passes with a six oh vote.
Mr. Shine, that's all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any matter from the table agenda that should be removed at this time.
Let me ask, uh, either one of the council members there, legislation that you might want to remove or discuss? If not, uh, Mr. Thompson, let's move, please.
I believe.
Yes?
Uh, council members, uh, Ms. Cooper? Just wanted to recognize Mr. Cooper, um, Mr. Shine, uh, he is here, matter is under introduction. He serves, uh, with Oliver and, uh, others, uh, uh, on the, uh, employment, employee retirement system board.
Where is?
Dark was here yesterday. He's there on the back row, has been here with us since the beginning.
Well, you wanna stand and, and just say hello to us from way back there?
Yes, sir, good afternoon. I'm a member of the employee retirement system and, uh, they're trying to get some things resolved in and we're looking forward to see if you pass it through us, Bob.
Well, you know we're gonna do that 'cause you asked us to. Alright.
Mr. Shine?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, but, but, but Cooper, would you, I'd love to have that on the record. Would you mind coming over?
Well, I, that's, that's.
That'd be a good thing, yeah.
He, he has worked, he has worked extremely hard.
Alright, that's fine.
He came into some very difficult circumstances. Employees are the ones who, uh, this impacts.
Come on up, Mr. Cooper. And, and give us what you, give us what you see.
Okay, well, what I see is, uh, we've been working on this retirement system, uh, we started out at a multiplier at two and a third and we bickered and bickered and we agreed at two point seven five. I've been having meetings with the pub, public works employees and the only thing they're concerned about is they are still, if they are on payroll at this time, that they will vest out at ten years.
Alright, I mean, that sounds good to me. I just, uh, I know Oliver kinda French a little bit when he used the word bicker 'cause he wouldn't want his folks knowing he's coming down there bickering with anybody. He's, he just might have disagreed a time or two. Alright, anybody have any questions for him?
Well, I'd just like to make one comment. We, we talked about this yesterday and I, I wanna make sure that it's clear for the record. Anything you have earned or accrued
Wrong.
up until today and all the way till the first of January twenty fifteen is not changed. There is no proposal to change that. Everything you've earned, accrued, or whatever plan you're in, up until then, is not changing. When you talk about whether you vest at the different age, I believe everybody that has current employee and becomes an employee before the first of January, none of that is changing with regard to what they recruit in terms of uh, benefit and/or what their vesting period and/or retirement date. So, I know we've done a really good job about telling everybody that, but I wanna tell that to everybody again, and it's through the hard work people like yourself that we appreciate you making that, uh, what we call ground level contact with the employees.
Yes.
Could I just ask what Mr. Jenkins just said? If somebody has seven years now, do they still vest in ten?
Yes, sir.
That is correct, that is correct. And if somebody has.
I mean, I'd have to get three more, Oliver.
And if somebody has seven years at a three and a third multiple, they still have three, seven years at three and a third multiple. And whatever their eighth year is, is what's gonna be at the new multiple. So the people that say, I've been here for twenty years, now you're gonna take away twenty percent of what I've earned. That is not the case. Everything you've made today through the first of the year is earned and that's still accrued at that level. Okay. But thank you for bringing that up, and once again, I, I personally appreciate all the time and service you as a valued member of our employee retirement system board. Thank you.
Mr. Cooper, thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you much.
Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Shine, you have good eyes over there 'cause I could not, I didn't even see him back there. He was right behind stands.
I didn't either. And standing there large either, Oliver. Well, you couldn't see it. I'm just kidding.
I don't even know what I'm supposed to say.
I take it that there are no, uh, I mean, all of the appeals have been done, uh, they were done yesterday.
Okay.
And, um, so we're now, now down to reports from offices, boards, and committees, which I overlooked yesterday.
Uh, Mike, I'll accept a motion from you for us to, uh.
I would prefer, I would prefer not to steal somebody's thunder.
Right, okay, well, go ahead on.
I mean, he spends full two weeks preparing his next clerk's report.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, wait, Oliver. Okay, Mr. Clark.
Oh, Mr. Shine, you should know, I gave my report yesterday.
Okay, I will sound like you had another one today. You know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna keep him doing it, uh. Mister Thompson, I believe we're down to council resolving itself into. Seconded. Been moved by Councilman Carvin and seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, the young one. All in favor of vote, yes, opposed is no. We are now resolved ourselves and, Mike, I'll accept a motion from you for the approval of the minutes.
And you got it, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes. Uh, all in favor of vote, yes, opposed is no. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry we rushing a little bit, but, uh, we got a date with destiny.
Not at all, Mr. Chairman. In fact, I'm, I'm about to have to, uh, to follow Councilwoman McCullough's lead. I know as a representative for District Gay, she's on her way up to southern for the five thirty meeting, uh, regarding the Harrows and Landfield.
Right, I'd like for y'all to get there because if I hold y'all any longer, I'm gonna have a telephone call from, from Senator Tarver. And, uh, hey, you know, that's your good friend, and both of y'all will be fussing at me. Holding y'all, holding y'all.
I, I believe, I believe it's just, uh.
I know what to do.
I believe it's just Senator Tarver who fusses at you publicly, Mr. Shine.
Well, no, 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 no.
I don't engage in that kind of habit.
Now, if I make you late, both of y'all gonna be fussing at me.
I may disagree with you, but I won't fuss at you.
Oh, well, I don't know some.
You can always speak at any meeting I'm at.
Alright, huh? I don't, I don't know sometime. Uh, Marvin, we are down to, uh, uh, public comments. Where's Marvin? Marvin, please. Now Marvin? 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 We're gonna have to today abide by the three-minute rules, uh, uh. You just heard what the mayor said. He's trying to get up on the cover road.
Well, real fast, uh, Marvin Muhammad, I.
You need a ride.
I, I don't, I don't share the desire of the, of the mayor to ru, to rush to the cover road today because I, because I don't wanna hear any more lies and dishonesty and outright deceit by what I believe by Senator Greg Tarver. But that's just my position with the Harrison, with the Harrison materials, uh, landfill.
Y'all hear that?
I believe that the people being deceived by a man that should be truly representing the citizens of the city of Shreveport and the community of, of the MLK community. So that's just where I'm at with that.
Alright.
However, I will be, uh, I will be, uh, hopefully, uh, attending the marathon in South Shreveport today that I feel like is, uh, for privilege at the moment. 'Cause I would wanna see what the next mayor, or the next great city of the south has planned.
Alright.
I did wanna say this, uh, before, just try to set the tone, uh, but since, but since you brought up Harrison, that kinda threw my tone off, you know, I'm sort of a history buff, and although City Councilwoman Rose McCullough has, uh, stepped out, you know, uh, it was actually ninety-four years to today.
Nineteenth Amendment certification, I bet.
Absolutely. Uh, August the twenty-sixth, uh, uh.
I'm surprised at Oliver.
Right. Well, well, he's sharp, you know, he, he.
Hey, that's what I'm saying.
He's, uh, he's not, he's not running, he's, uh, running unopposed along with, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, Carvin, so I was waiting for the seminar, that's why I was kinda holding out. So when I get ready to get involved, I would know what I would, I would need to do to run unopposed in my second term. But, uh, but hey, uh, but nevertheless, uh, uh, it was ninety-four years ago that the United States government, uh, ratified the nineteenth amendment. Uh, not actually ratified it, but they con, they actually instituted it to the Constitution. They actually ratified it, uh, the week before and it was introduced actually the week before, so we just wanted to stop and recognize that because we know that without the nineteenth amendment and the right, uh, uh, for, for women's services, we wouldn't have a City Councilwoman McCullough, we wouldn't have, uh, maybe a Shereka Fields, or maybe the fine women to, to my right and your left, uh, City Attorney, uh, Terry, uh, uh. And just, just, just so many, uh, uh, fine women that, that, that works in, that works, uh, in, in city government. Uh, I did wanna say real fast, and, and you, and you ate some of my time of, uh.
I'm gonna give it back to you.
I, I, I appreciate that, uh, and I do wanna, I do wanna, uh, acknowledge.
One of your friends in town.
I do wanna acknowledge, uh, uh, CAO, uh, Dale Sibley. We actually spoke earlier, you're coming into the meeting about the tree that's, uh, actually falling into the right of way, uh, in, uh, City Councilwoman McCullough, uh, district. Uh, we actually did some research and we, and we discovered, uh, that the city of Shreveport, along with two other, um, entities, might actually own that property. And based on, and based on the, 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 the property line, which I believe a, a surveyor will have to go out and make that determination. Uh, I got that information from the, from the fine department, you know, from the city in, engineering department of the city of Shreveport.
Hey, you're smart.
But, uh, the city of Shreveport, along with, um, it seems that Alonso Esther, uh, wields some property to, uh, Kendrick Esther, which is on the north side of that property, uh, and, and then, uh, Marie Patterson Williams. She also owns some property at that location, and then, of course, the third entity is the city of Shreveport, and they actually owns that ditch area there, uh, that, 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 that traffic there. So hopefully, I wanna thank, uh, CAO, uh, Dale Sibley again for, for, for working with us and actually sending Public Works out there, hopefully tomorrow, uh, because again, we are hoping that the premise of, of, uh, the safety of the, of the community serves as president versus its own private property. However, one of those three, uh, entities are definitely responsible, so we have definitely identified who to, who to bill.
Alright.
Then lastly, and I'm gonna be very succinct, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, Shine, I thank you for dealing with me. Uh, on, uh, on Monday, there is a safety committee and, and well, uh, and the suggestion is, is that we limit the, the days
Right.
that, uh, that we're out there in the, out there, you know, interfacing in the city streets. You know, I'm not a constitutional lawyer, and I know there's a few lawyers in the house.
Wow.
But, uh, but it seems to me that, that, if, that, if there is not a compelling governmental interest, then, then you actually abridge the right of citizens to actually interface, uh, in those intersections based on base, actually based on, uh, the First Amendment. Freedom of speech, freedom of, of religion, and, uh, freedom of assembly. But I'm not a constitutional lawyer, so, so based on, uh, power restraint, and, and I know we have a council and a councilman on the council, and I also believe that ICAO is also a, a lawyer, and I know Julie Glass.
I see Attorney Danny Malone is listening very intently back there also.
So, 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 so I wanna make sure, so I, so, so I wanna make sure.
Chairman Shine.
Okay, you got one minute.
Thank you. So I wanna make sure that we don't abridge and limit and restrict activity, something that's already been const, uh, constitutional allowed based on what somebody can, could, uh, uh, see as fairness, because fairness is not the rule of the land. Fairness is relative. What we want to do, we wanna look at what's, uh, equitable to, to the best, to, to the citizens. So, uh, I just wanted to say that as we, as I and, uh, Assistant Chief, uh, Wayne Smith and other groups actually received a phone call just now, uh, from our sickle cell director, uh, Lily Bradford. So we're gonna be getting together and hopefully, we can come up with something, because again, I really don't wanna get into any, any law issues where, where we actually start feeling like we being squeezed and, and, uh, limited based on so-called fairness, which again, that if the city, that if the city, this city, uh, municipality doesn't have any compelling governmental interest, then they're actually saying something else. Thank you, uh, Councilman Shine.
Uh, Terry, Ms. Scott, did you see we got a legal scholar up here? So you know, if you run into a little something, you might wanna call on him. Uh, Marvin, thank you.
No, no, I, I, I actually, uh, actually at Graham, I was, I was in social work. But, but, but one of the, one of the hands of a social worker is an advocate.
That's right.
And we actually have a policy on in DC, but you didn't hear that from me.
Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Keith? Please come up. Give us your name. And I extended him a little extra time.
I've been extremely busy, sir.
We'll, 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 you know, I'll turn my head a little bit if you start running.
No, sir, I, I'm, I'm quite all right. Thank you very much for having me here. Uh, my name is Jonathan Keith and I'm here basically just to kind of, uh, uh, inform everybody about what my organization is doing here. I'm from Pathways in Education. Uh, you spoke earlier about, uh, how back in the day, there were people who went out and got kids off the street and got them back in school. That, that's what I do. So I'm formerly from, um, well, YMCA Educational Services. You can probably tell from my accent, uh, I'm not a local boy, uh, I come from Detroit. Um, and we work around the country. Uh, we've got about forty thousand kids back in school. Uh, Cattle, uh, started working with us a couple of years ago. We finally opened up a center here on August eleventh, and as of today, we've gotten seventy kids back into school. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware, aware of that. Um, we run an open door policy. If you wanna check us out and see the things that we're doing, every day at one o'clock, we have an orientation. Uh, we are located at eight nine 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 Mansfield, and that's it.
Mr. Keith, we appreciate you coming down and I wanna tell you that you're doing a fine job and that's a great service to the
Thank you.
to the city. In my previous, uh, uh, profession, Sam, before I got to be a lawyer.
Right.
Uh.
Constitutional lawyer.
Yeah, constitutional lawyer.
Constitutional lawyer.
I, uh, was an educator.
Yes.
And, uh, I, I know the value, that's, you know, that's, that's the underlying fiber of our society. That's the thing that really it's not our great armies that make America so great, but it's our great educational system that actually makes us great.
Yes, sir, and, and I wanna say too, I mean, the young people that we've been able to work with are just absolutely wonderful people. Um, I think a lot of times when people think of high school dropouts, they think of kids who are troublemakers, and it's absolutely the opposite of what we're experiencing here uh, in Shreveport and in Cattle. Um, we've just got amazing young people who want to get back into school, who want to be contributing members of society, who want to work, who want to achieve a, a, a high school diploma, and, um, I, I, I welcome you to, to, to come and see them any, any, any time you like.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you very much.
Alright, uh, Sammy?
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Department M one two three, Port Louisiana, seven one one oh one. I just want to say that this is the week I'm going to be turning over my money to the MDA. I've been working real hard as I could to raise the money, look forward to giving it to them this week before the date of August twenty-ninth is when the deadline will be. This'll make twenty-six years. And I've been helping for the past twenty-six years. I love helping MDA. It's a, I guess it's just a part of who I am and it's a great cause and I love it. And also, I wanted to say that today I went over to Alan's Grill for the first time, and Jeff, I know you've been there before 'cause we had a run-in recently a while back and.
Absolutely, I told you how good it was. I'm glad to check it.
I found out today when I tried the club sandwich, and I told the manager that I would mention that to you and hope everybody will give it a try because I had the club sandwich and a Coke for about ten bucks and it was worth it.
It is great food and a great value for anyone.
And I'm definitely gonna go back whenever I get the opportunity. That, that started it, so I've got the menu with me and look forward to doing that and hopefully that maybe y'all will give it a try besides just Jeff. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Sammy, for the, uh, work that you do for MDA. That's very, very admirable.
Mr. Vance, please.
To the chairman, to the council, thank you so much for having me. Uh, my name is Antonio Vance and, uh, my wife and I own a business called V-Force Repairs, where we, uh, service and repair AC, heating, and appliance. where we, uh, service and repair AC, heating, and appliances. And, uh, Chairman Shannon, you and I share the same district, you, you also know my father for years, Jimmy Vance.
Oh, wonderful man.
Yes, sir.
And you favor your dad.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Um, a very, uh, uh, big concern that we have, uh, being a small minority business owner, um, and licensed and insured, want to make sure we did everything legal and in order, um, is very hard in the HVAC industry to, uh, you know, when you're up against the bigger companies and you're, and the market is saturated, uh, it's hard to advertise, you know, when you have low funding and that type of thing, it's hard to advertise, you know, you have your, your free avenues, you know, like social media and that type of thing. And, uh, but other than that, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty, uh, difficult to, uh, you know, have enough to stay busy daily or even weekly. So, uh, you know, and, and with me being a married father of four and one on the way, uh, you know, we're a one-income family. So, uh, I'm wondering, is there some type of program or list available that, uh, our business can be on where, uh, the service calls could increase, and when service calls increase, referrals increase? So, you know, that creates year-round business. And, um, also, uh, being homeowners for the past eight years, paying taxes, business taxes, you know, that type of thing, uh, you know, leads in that type of thing, increase of business, would help us to stay in business, build a business, and even hire people. Uh, you know, because trying, when you're trying to do it by yourself, it, it can get, you know, pretty difficult. And, uh, but, but also to be able to hire students, uh, that, that maybe come out of Eris College, as myself did back in 2012, or even Vo-Tech, you know, or one of those things. So, uh, that's, that's basically the point where we're at right now. So, that's basically, uh, something that, that, that we request, you know, something that maybe, uh, that has a fair share available or, you know, some type of program or, or listing available and that type of thing.
I would tell you, if you've got two cards, I'd give one to the Director of SPAR buildings, and I'd give another one to, uh, that brilliant man that's sitting over there-
Okay.
With the, uh, with the curly hair.
And we, we can link him up with Karen Fisher and Shelley with SPAR and-
Right.
Okay, okay.
Knows him and what's going on.
If you would do that, uh-
We definitely have enough business cards available for that, at least that.
And I would though, I mean, this MSI is an opportunity, and I don't know if you've looked into the MSI, the Minority Supply Institute. They, and Mike brought the name, reminded me of that, but, and they're extremely active, and they've had some real success stories recently. So, and that's a, a nonprofit, but on the private side, that's very engaged in that business stuff here in town.
We can link him up with them.
And they're designed to do exactly what you're talking about, help people to build capacity and grow their businesses, especially minority-owned businesses. So, um, I think that would be a great resource. Also, really, um, they're less active now than they used to be, but there is still a presence here from the Small Business Development Center. Um, if you haven't talked to them, that's worth giving them a call, um, uh, you know, just to find out what resources they might have available. They may be able to refer you to some places that could be helpful.
Okay, good.
I think the acronym is SBDC, right, is it?
I don't know whether you were down here when Jay came for the council, uh, I, I would advise you to get in contact with that group.
Okay, what, what's that?
Out at the Biomed. Uh, you, do you know where the Biomed is located?
I think-
Uh, off of Mansfield, was it Mansfield, Green?
Yeah, kind of across, kind of adjacent from UPS.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh-
Yeah, I would, I would, I would go by there and talk to some of those people, because that's what they're in.
Um, um, developing businesses. Okay.
And, and, and they could, and, and if one day you come down, you bring me a few cards, uh, I get around a little bit now. Don't get around, uh, all as much as I used to, uh, before I got to be 42, but, uh, I'll-
Well, you same age as me, then.
There you go. I'll pass, I'll pass out some of your cards for you, because I know you know your dad, you have a granddad.
Right, right.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Uh, the MSI Minority Supply Institute.
Hmm.
The number is 562-
Yeah.
1155.
I think Mr. Thompson is on that board.
Catherine Stringer.
Okay.
Catherine Stringer.
Okay.
Are you on that board?
Yeah.
Headboard, I'm on there.
Yeah, hey, that's how he got that gray hair. Two years ago, he didn't have it, he didn't have the gray hair. Okay, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Vance.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sure do it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Dr. Ken Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Kenneth Craft at 157 Archer 71105. Uh, I won't need three minutes, but that's okay. First of all, I want to brag on my motto, these four little geeky nerds won the National Quiz Bowl Championship from Jesuit High School in New Orleans recently. Not as big to some people as football, basketball, or soccer, but pretty impressive, uh, Louisiana boys. Uh, the proposal I sent y'all the other day, and I apologize for the error, I had to correct it, is a simple, straightforward proposal. I didn't know until this morning, the mayor was having a forum Thursday at Riverview at 5:30. Uh, the city employees deserve a pay raise, the operating budget reserve is fragile. As one who proposed that very idea 34 years ago this month, uh, been with the city three months at the time, and, and, and we were broke. We were having trouble paying bills. We, we thought the, uh, August 15th semi-monthly payroll, payroll might be delayed. We, we couldn't borrow, interest rates were 20, 21%. Uh, we put off a few purchases and made the payroll. Things were really a struggle, much more so than today. Fast forward now, we need money, always do, always will. The proposal is simple, it, it's a tenth of a percent for two years. Very limited amount, very limited period, raising about to meet $9 million. Uh, that's probably a little conservative. It would start in January and end 12/31/16. If the voters wanted to renew it at the next council, they could put it on the presidential ballot on, on 12/8/16, ensuring a maximum turnout. I'm, I'm not thinking it needs to be renewed. I think it needs to be passed initially, so the reserve can be built up, and we can go back to S and P and Moody's and lower our, our, uh, increase our bond rating and lower our interest payments. If we don't do something, we're going to get caught like Mr. Cooper on the retirement board, you know? And in 2000, the experts told us the profession of the decade was elementary teacher. Well, in 2011, when they did the summary, the worst profession of the decade was elementary teacher. 880,000 laid off. Why, states got in trouble with retirement and had to pay unfunded accrued liabilities, and teachers had to be sacrificed. So, ironically, the idea that this would be the greatest profession of the decade turned about to be the biggest dog. Uh, our retirement situation, our insurance, everything, so think about it. Uh, I guess we'll talk a little maybe more about it Thursday night at the public meeting, but it's, it's a modest amount. And if, for some reason, we don't have a city election December 6th, I would not do it. If, if, uh, Ollie Tyler wins in November, like, uh, the fellow Gregory Hudson said-
Yeah.
And, and if, and if my neighbor, if Tyler Faro wins in November, then let's do it later. I don't want an extra expense.
You're right.
But if we're already having an election, let's do it.
And please, Mr. Craft, now, don't call any.
Okay.
Like that we get in trouble. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
God bless you.
I will say, uh, quickly, thanks for mentioning Quiz Bowl. I have, uh, not thought about it in a while, and, uh, I got a few medals at state myself, uh, all through high school. It was, uh, I, I was one of those geeky guys that, uh, did the Quiz Bowl, and, uh- I don't know if I should ruin the illusion, but back when it was on Channel 12, I did the Quiz Bowl on the-
Wow, there you go. It's, it's-
That was fun.
Dale, you see that, huh, when you run into a problem, Sammy? You want a brilliant mind. Did I overlook anybody? I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to close, yeah.
I never did the Quiz Bowl.
That's a brilliant mind over there.
There's always exceptions. I'd like to make comment as City Councilman.
Just, just one minute. Did, did I overlook anybody? I see, I see one lady back there, uh-
Or Ms. Jones?
Is it Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones, you're very smart. I wish we had others that would do that. Sometimes I wish we had some council members that would, that would do that, you know? They have a tendency, uh, uh, Ms. Scott to kind of showboat a little bit, but I guess that's the way it is. Uh, I'll-
Um, Dale, and I don't even know who to bring this to, and maybe if I send it to you, you- Okay, for some reason, in the site selection websites, okay, and you know, site selection community and the rest. So, N W L E P is on there, Greater Bossier Economic Development Forum is on there, the Port of Shreveport is on there, Northwest Louisiana Economic Development is on there, but neither the city of Shreveport, not the years responsible for the chamber, but there is no, we are not listed as even a, whether it's the MSA, you know, they rank you by MSAs and the rest of it, and Shreveport doesn't even have, isn't even listed on there. So, I don't know if one needs to, if it's Arlena, whoever just needs to call them and say, "Put us on the list," or whatever.
Can you send me something I have no idea?
I can send you basically what I just said, but if you go to the website, you'll see that they're all on there, we're not, but-
Site selection website?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And they're to rep-
Be involved in getting on there, but we'll find out.
No, no, but they're the ones who, you know, rank MSAs for economic development and opportunities, et cetera, et cetera. It's a good thing to have your name on, you know, on the list.
Okay. We'll check that out.
And it's a database, that. I don't know if you need, like I said, I don't know if that's kind of Arlena's bag these days, or who it is that, that- If we, if we had a TSKID, it'd be very obvious, but in the absence of that, it's going to you to-
We'll check it out, take care of it.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
I'm making motion, Mr. Chairman, that we reconvene the meeting.
Good thing. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, let me make sure that everybody hear that. It was moved by, uh, Councilman, uh, Mike Carbin, and it was seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. And, uh, all in favor to reconvene? Mr. Sibley, did you hear me?
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor, vote yes. Uh, opposed to no, we have reconvened, and if, at this time, uh, we have no objection, Mr. Thompson? This city council meeting is coming to an end. I will see everybody at the mayor's, uh- Wayne? I didn't see you back there. If I had known that, I'd have, I'd have recognized you. Okay.